Good evening and welcome to Athens City Council. It's Monday, March 23, 7:00 p.m. And tonight, we have two parts to our meeting, one of those being special session where we'll be reading some ordinances, and then the second, we will be having some committee meetings. And tonight, we have four members, so we're establishing the quorum. We do have four members present with us tonight, and the clerk, and the government channel director, and some other staff with us. And then, present by joining us by a Zoom meeting, we have the mayor and the three other members of council. So thanks for taking time out and joining us in that way. We are offering the possibility of asking questions during the meeting, so that we're giving our best attempt to make the meeting accessible to the general public. And you can email those questions to, and I'm going to read that email to you now. It's all one word, and it's called askquestion@ci athens oh dot us. So if you have questions or comments during the course of the meeting that you need to send to us, you may. Now, the comments that we will be sharing with people, or the questions, should have something to do with the ordinances that we're reading, or the committee meetings. So we're in a little bit different agenda tonight. We're not having the opportunity for citizens to speak on other topics that aren't on the agenda. So we'll move forward with the special session, and we do have the quorum present. We have an ordinances now for third reading, the first one being 3220. This is an ordinance amending ordinance 2819 authorizing design engineering of the Stimson Avenue Improvements Project Number 315. And council member Crowe will be introducing that.
Thank you, President Isley. I'd like to make a motion to approve 03220.
Second.
This is an ordinance that is one of the steps along our attempts, our intention to improve the Stimson Avenue corridor. We needed to appropriate some additional monies into the appropriation ordinance in order to cover some of the additional design and engineering for the project that came from necessary for right-of-way and easement costs, particularly because of our desire to bury the utilities along Stimson Avenue. There were some additional costs for drainage design, and some of the driveway impacts. But this ordinance is to, was discussed at committee and read twice, and tonight, we're looking for an approval to amend the appropriation ordinance to appropriate from the unappropriated balance the sum of $128,100. And that's for Street Rehabilitation Fund 572, transaction code 500. This authorizes the Service Safety Director to expend up to $758,100, again, from the Street Rehabilitation Fund. Thank you.
And so that was a motion to approve, and you the second?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any comments or questions from council members in the chambers or available on the monitors? Okay. If no questions, then, and we will have one abstention from council member Kotzis. All those in favor, and that is, those allowed to vote tonight are the ones in the chamber. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. And abstentions, one. And you had a question.
Do we have quorum? If only three of us would vote?
Yes, it is acceptable, then, that the majority of those present and able to vote can do that. But thanks, good question.
Sure.
Okay. So we have three in favor, one abstention, and the motion carries, and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 3420 is an ordinance authorizing the purchase of a replacement boiler heating system for the Athens Community Center. And this is introduced by council member Fall on behalf of council member Grace.
Thank you. I move that we adopt 3420.
Second.
This is to enable the community center to switch out their old inefficient system for a new system up to $112,000. Thank you.
Okay. We have a motion and second for approval of ordinance 3420. Any questions or comments? Council member Claude Felder.
I'm really glad to see that the Athens Community Center is getting a much more efficient boiler, which will lower the amount of money for that every month, and will also lower the carbon emissions as well.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions from those joining us remotely? Okay. All right, we have a motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries, and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 3520 is an ordinance authorizing a contract with the Washington County Commissioners and declaring an emergency. And council member Fall will be speaking on behalf of council member Grace for this.
Thank you. I move that we adopt 3520.
Second.
This is a normal MOU between Washington County and us for emergency bed space. Pretty straightforward. We've been doing this for years. Thank you.
Okay. We have a motion and second for approval of ordinance 3520. Any comments or questions? Comments or questions remotely? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries, and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 3620 is an ordinance accepting a certificate of registration from Horizon Telecom, Inc., for use of the city's right-of-way. This is introduced by council member Fall.
Thank you. I move that we adopt 3620.
Second.
This is a normal right-of-way issue that we've been dealing with forever, to enable right-of-way use by Horizon, Horizon, normally for miscellaneous infrastructure, such as wires and switching stations.
Okay. We have a motion and second for approval of 3620. Any comments or questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries, and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 3720 is an ordinance closing a portion of Union Street between Court and Congress on Saturday, August 15, 2020, from 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. for the Athens Community Arts and Music Festival, introduced by council member Kotzis.
President Isley, thank you. I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance 03720.
Second.
And this is to allow the street closure of West Union Street between Court and Congress. This is on Saturday, August 15, from 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 o'clock p.m. for the Athens Community Arts and Music Festival.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries, and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 3820 is an ordinance suspending the enforcement of Athens City Code Section 13.04.10, unnecessary noise on Union Street and contiguous property to Union Street on August 15, 2020, for Athens Community Arts and Music Festival, introduced by council member Kotzis.
President Isley, thank you. I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance 03820.
Second.
And this is just one of three ordinances that need to come through for this festival that would be happening on August 15. This is just suspension of our noise ordinance.
Comments or questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Can I ask a question?
Oh, yes. Mayor Patterson?
It just occurred to me, if the coronavirus continues into August, and it's not possible to hold these streets advanced, will we have to pass an ordinance to repeal this ordinance? Or what would be the mechanism to do a cancel? I guess is what I'm asking.
Well, I would think that if the city cancels the event, then the conditions for which these ordinances have been passed, to, in other words, suspend noise, allow vending, those kind of things, would be null and void. But, good question, and we can double-check with the law director to make sure that we are following up on each of these road closures for each of these summer events. So thank you for the comment. Mayor Patterson?
I would add to that, President Isley, that if we get guidance that comes down from the state, or from the county, Athens City County Health Department, that could also drive our either delay or cancellation of any street event, because we do take our guidance from, at this point anyway, from what the governor's office is doing when it comes to dealing with the coronavirus.
Okay. Thank you. Council member Kotzis.
Let me just add that, I mean, we currently already have some ordinances that we've passed, like the Ohio University International Street Fair, which is not happening. You know, of course, it would be too late to pass anything, so I assume at this point that is just...
Well, it has a date associated. When that date goes by, that means that ordinance isn't really in effect anymore. So...
Likely, and likely that we, as you say, council member Kotzis, we can't pass anything in time, anyway, for that particular date.
But if they wanted to do a different date, they would have to come back to do another street closure, because of the information that's in the ordinance is date-time specific.
I see what you're saying. Yeah, thank you.
And also promoter. Yep, yeah. You couldn't pass this off to someone else and let them have a, yeah.
Right. But thank you for double-checking, just to make sure there's nothing else official we need to do.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and second for approval of 3920. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries, and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 4020 is an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to enter into an LPA federal-local let...
Wasn't that, was that, that wasn't all of them? Did we only pass...
No, the peddling you need to do.
Yeah, we still need to do that.
Oh, I'm sorry, that was 38.
We just did 3820.
3820.
We need 3920.
Excuse me, 3920. An ordinance suspending the enforcement of Athens City Code Chapter 11.04, vending, peddling, and soliciting to allow vending in a designated area on Saturday, August 15, 2020, during the Athens Art and Music Festival, introduced by council member Kotzis.
President Isley, thank you. I'd like to make a motion to adopt 03920.
Second.
And this ordinance will just allow vending to happen during the Athens Arts and Music Festival on August 15, Saturday.
Okay. So we have a motion and second. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries, and the ordinance is approved. Now we'll move on to ordinance 4020. Thank you. An ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to enter into an LPA federal-local let project agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation for the reconstruction of Stimson Avenue between State and Grant Streets. This is project number 315, and is introduced by council member Crowe.
Thank you, President Isley. This is the standard ODOT-produced LPA agreement that allows the city administration, or the city, to administer the Stimson project. And I'd like to make a motion to approve 04020.
Second.
Thank you. This agreement also lists the ODOT contribution to that project, which is $2,126,815. And this is funding secured through the Small City Program. We'll be discussing Stimson Avenue a number of times tonight, and the Small City Program and our ability to get this funding is very important for the Stimson Avenue project. Thank you.
Okay. We have a motion and second for approval, and council member Fall, you had a comment?
I'm going to take this time to point out, yeah, once again, that this sort of grant is the sort of thing that we get money from the government when we do our census forms. Very, very important for our funding situations, even more now. So fill the census out, and the students fill the census out for where they live the most in the year. Please.
Which means, just to clarify, that university students are asked to fill out the census although, as though they are still at their university campus, like they would have been on April 1st, had their university not been closed. So Ohio University students should fill out the census as though they are still in Athens.
Right. Thank you, both, for the comments. Yes. Council member Kotzis.
I didn't mention this prior to the beginning of council, but I'll be abstaining from this one, too.
Yep. Thank you. All right. Any other comments from our remote attendees? Okay. We have a motion and second for approval. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. And abstentions?
Here.
Council member Kotzis. Okay. The motion carries, and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 4120 is an ordinance amending the 2020 appropriation ordinance, and is introduced by council member Crowe.
Thank you, President Isley. I'd like to make a motion to approve 04120.
Second.
This appropriation ordinance, I will read the pertinent sections here. The 2020 appropriation ordinance 13019 is hereby amended by appropriating from the unappropriated balance the following sums: $3,000 to Parking Garage Fund 730.718, transaction code 600, for transfer to pay debt; and $3,252 to FEMA Fund 588.580, transaction code 600, for a grant transfer and increasing the total appropriations by said amount. The same appropriation ordinance is amended to decrease and increase the following appropriations: decrease General Fund Parking Enforcement 101.718, transaction code 500, by $130,000 for parking meter lease payments. Also to decrease the Tourism Fund 212.120, transaction code 300, by $7,000. This is a transient guest tax payment to the Athens City County Visitors Bureau, which was over-budgeted, and decreasing and increasing the total appropriations by said amount. Thank you.
We have a motion and second for approval of this ordinance. Any comments or questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries, and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 4220 is an ordinance amending ordinance 2720, authorizing the auditor to enter into a contract with Creative Microsystems, Inc., known as CMI, to upgrade software used by city departments. This is introduced by council member Crowe.
Thank you, President Isley. I'd like to make a motion to approve 04220.
Second.
Thank you. We would like to amend ordinance 2720 to read as follows: The 2020 appropriation ordinance 13019 is hereby amended to appropriate from the unappropriated balance the sum of $175,000 to Capital Improvements Fund Auditor 580.102, transaction code 500. And then, this authorizes the auditor to enter into a contract for this new software with Creative Microsystems Incorporated. Thank you.
Okay. We have a motion and second for approval of this ordinance 4220. Any comments or questions? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries, and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 4320 is an ordinance implementing a plan for an interim Service Safety Director due to military deployment of the current Service Safety Director, introduced by council member Crowe.
Thank you, President Isley. I'd like to make a motion to approve 04320.
Second.
Thank you. This is a very important ordinance, came up in committee, and has been read twice, and now, for the third time, I'd like to remind the public and council what this ordinance entails. This is an ordinance that prepares for the leave of our Service Safety Director, Mr. Stone, who also is a colonel in the Ohio National Guard and the U.S. Army. And as in that role, he is commander of the 16th Engineer Brigade, which has been mobilized into active federal service, and in order to complete a mission for the United States of America. And we are preparing to have Mr. Stone away from Athens during this period. And in that preparation, we have, the mayor has assigned Police Chief Tom Pyle to be the acting Service Safety Director. He will serve as both the chief of police, as well as the Service Safety Director, and he will be compensated with a temporary pay increase of 10% of his salary. That will be $51.87 per hour during this period when he is serving as both the chief of police, as well as the Service Safety Director. Also, as part of this plan, Captain Ralph Harvey will also be compensated with a temporary pay increase to $44.35 per hour during this period when he will be serving as both captain of police, as well as the acting department head of the police department. So let me reiterate that Chief Pyle will remain the chief of police, but that Captain Harvey will be the acting department head of the police department. And this ordinance is temporary, and it will end upon the return of Andrew Stone to active status within the city, or at the pleasure of the mayor, but no later than August 31, 2021. Thank you.
Okay. We have a motion and second for approval of 4320. Any comments or questions? Council member Fall?
He will certainly be missed right now.
He will be.
Godspeed. Wish him all the best.
Maybe he'll be assigned to come back to us. That would be awesome.
Yeah, maybe he'll be assigned to help with coronavirus.
Okay. And many thanks to Chief Pyle for doing the double duty for us, too.
Absolutely.
And to Captain Harvey for taking this on.
Yes.
Any other comments or questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries, and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 4420 is an ordinance amending ordinance 13119, staffing levels, introduced by council member Crowe.
Thank you, President Isley. I'd like to make a motion to approve 04420.
Second.
Thank you. This is in connection to the absence of Mr. Stone and the changes that I just discussed in the police department. Because of the situation we are in, we will require a bit more supervisory support in the police department. And so we are proposing, in this ordinance, to amend, to decrease the number of patrol officers from 20 to 19, and increase the number of lieutenants from 5 to 6. I'd like to remind the public and council that this will not change any of the patrol officers on duty in the city of Athens. It is just changing the, basically, the levels within the police department. Thank you.
So we have a motion and second for approval of 4420. Any comments or questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries, and the ordinance is approved. We now have ordinances for second reading, and I will pause briefly between the readings of each of the titles of these to see if there are any comments or questions. I won't make my pause quite as long tonight, because we don't have any members of the audience, and we're always looking for those kind of comments, too. So raise your hand and wave it wildly if you do have a comment. Ordinance 4520 is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an annexation agreement with the Athens Township Trustees for property located north of Lurig Road. This is Township Road 242, introduced by council member Fall. Ordinance 4620 is an ordinance accepting a certificate of registration from Leax Regional Water District for use of the city's right-of-way, introduced by council member Fall. Ordinance 4720 is an ordinance granting a special right-of-way permit to New Carpenter Hall LLC, 19 East Carpenter Street, introduced by council member Fall. Ordinance 4820 is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to submit an application and enter into an agreement with the Ohio Development Services Agency for Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, allocation program funds for program year 2020, introduced by council member Grace. Ordinance 4920 is an ordinance providing for the issuance of $390,000 of notes by the city of Athens, Ohio, in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of renewing notes previously issued to pay part of the costs of acquiring new parking meters and declaring an emergency, introduced by council member Fall, Crowe, excuse me. Ordinance 5020 is an ordinance amending the 2020 appropriation ordinance, and this is introduced by council member Crowe. Okay. If no comments, a motion to adjourn, please, from this special session.
So moved.
Second. Okay. We have a motion and second for adjournment of the special session. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. We are adjourned. And we're immediately proceeding into the committee of the whole for the NOPEC. Discussion of the NOPEC, that's the Northeast Ohio Program.
Public Energy.
Energy Council, I believe, of which Mayor Patterson is a board member. And each year, for the past several years, the city has taken advantage of their Energize Community Grant Program. Mayor Patterson, do you have some additional details to offer us about what we might be submitting for this year?
I do, I do. Let me just start with, if you remember, council, in 2018, we were able to use that grant funding to put solar lighting in our bus shelters. 2019, and again, it was 2019 going into 2020, we were able to use that money to purchase personal device charging stations that are guised as shade structures. They look like umbrellas, and they would be used with some of the hexagon-shaped tables at the sewing pool, but mobile enough to where we can move them around and deploy them elsewhere in the city when we have events. Of course, that's all contingent upon how things unfold with COVID-19 this spring and summer, but we do have them. They're being shipped to us as I speak to you. For 2020, what we would like to do is use this grant program once again. This time, it would be to put standalone solar streetlights lightly in the Far East neighborhood. But we're exploring other areas for having some lighting. The reason I'm saying the Far East neighborhood is because for anyone who's been in the Far East neighborhood, you'll know that the power transmission lines run east-west through that area, along streets such as Jacobs, Dalton, and Hillcrest, I believe. Whereas the north-south streets, which are long blocks, have no power that run at the curb, so therefore, it would be cost prohibitive, at this point, to put power along the street itself, down those streets. So we're exploring the possibility of putting them there. It'll be roughly $11,000. We also have, from the previous granting mechanisms, money that was placed in escrow through NOPEC, so we could possibly have more money than that to purchase some of these standalone lamp posts. These would be commercial-grade lamp posts. They're not cheap. So that's what we're exploring. But again, we could certainly make some adjustments and put those standalone lamp posts elsewhere. But that's what the plan is at this point in time with the NOPEC, the Northeast Ohio Public Energy Council, community granting mechanism.
Okay.
This has been a great granting mechanism, by the way, just to share, and it's all based upon our involvement with NOPEC from our gas aggregation. This is not the same as SOPEC, so don't confuse the two, although the Southeast Ohio Public Energy Council is a partner with NOPEC, Northeast Energy, Public Energy, Public blah blah blah. You know what I'm saying. NOPEC. So that's what the plan is at this point in time.
Okay. Thank you.
Great.
Any questions or comments from those present at the council here or joining us remote? Councilmember Claude Felder?
I understand the rationale for putting those solar lights in the Far East side neighborhood. I think that makes a great deal of sense, but I do hope that if there are any other opportunities to get lighting, that they would go to the West side, because I think the West side is very much in need of more lights because of the vandalism and the peeping toms and the sexual assaults there.
Okay.
I didn't hear that.
Oh, you didn't hear it? Oh, Councilmember Claude Felder was just interested that if we do have money remaining and have filled all the sites that we need to on the Far East side, that we still consider the West side, just for safety reasons, some of the issues that have come up of late.
Thank you. I would contend that we're going to use the, we're still planning, as you know, the CDBG money can be used in that area for that, where the transmission lines run down Washington Street as opposed to an area where the power transmission lines don't run parallel to the street itself, they run perpendicular. So there's a lot of difficulty in terms of getting a feed to go to mid-block for some areas like the Far East neighborhood. And we, I mean, I would contend that the same thing would hold true elsewhere in the city on the South side, where we have areas where transmission lines may not send, have a main trunk that runs down. So we're certainly exploring all options, but I would say that for the small amount of money that this is, we are better off doing smaller projects, obviously, that would fit within the scope of solar and think more substantial lighting in areas such as the West side.
Okay. Thanks for the comments.
I could tell you a quick, I would just say, I would echo what the mayor was saying, and these are standalone, it seems to make sense to put them in areas where you don't already have the infrastructure in place, put a traditional light, and lighting is needed there as well. And given the fact that we do have plans to invest heavily on the West side already, I would be in support of focusing on the Far East side for this particular project.
Okay. And Councilmember Kotzis has a comment.
And this is just more about the cost of these, so it sounds like, it sounds like these are, would cost more than if we, if we do have the power running, running along the course of a block, it's probably more cost-effective to have a, have one that's not powered by solar? Or are the units a lot more expensive?
For the solar ones?
Correct, yes.
Councilmember Kotzis' question was, are the solar units a lot more expensive? Are you aware of what the cost per unit is on the lighting?
I am, roughly. I've asked Bob Hedy to look into this. He's not, this is unfamiliar terrain to him. I believe it's about $3,000 per light post, so again, just to share with council, this is not to deploy a large amount of solar, commercial lighting anywhere. This is more of a pilot than anything else, and if you think this is the most prudent use of this month, I mean, as we move forward, this will get us maybe four lights, which could do roughly four streets, whether that's between State Street and Jacobs or Jacobs and Dalton. I mean, that's yet to be determined, but, you know, this is not something that's going to get us tens of lights, it's not. We are looking, as I mentioned, we're looking at, you know, four, maybe five, if we can squeeze it, maybe six, commercial-grade Fuller lights to go mid-block on these blocks.
Okay. Thanks. All right. Councilmember Claude Felder?
Well, it is good to see the city investing more in solar energy, even if this will just be a few lights, so thank you for that.
Okay. And Councilmember Claude Felder, I know you all are having difficulty hearing, so I'm just, I'm relaying that she said thank you.
For the solar.
Okay, for the solar. All right. If that's all, then we will move on to the Transportation Committee. And given the circumstances, Councilmember Fall, why don't you just stay where you are, and the other members who serve on the Transportation Committee, they're all up at the dais right now, and we've got unusual seating circumstances tonight because we're all spread out, trying to keep our distance with the, following the coronavirus guidelines. So, yep, we're ready. We have three agenda items. Councilmember Crowell is chair.
Thank you, President Nisley. Just to explain, I am vice chair of the Transportation Committee, but since Member Kotzis recuses himself on the Stimson Avenue project, I will be handling these items in committee tonight and going forward. We have a lot of information to share from the city administration. We are talking about two items tonight in committee, and I will start really with the construction project of Stimson Avenue. We already talked earlier tonight about the ordinance which authorized the agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation to have the city administer this program, this project, as well as to receive monies from the, from ODOT for this project. In a series of emails and a discussion that I had today with Bob Hedy, our Director of Engineering and Public Works, he has made clear that, you know, this is one of our main arteries, and I agree with Director Hedy completely in the direction that the city administration is proposing that we take for Stimson Avenue. This road was built in 1970, so we've had this road for 50 years, and we'd like to improve it for the next 50 or the next 75, however many years we can get out of it. If we think back to 1970, I will, first thing that comes to mind for me is that this was the first year of Earth Day. 1970, April 22nd, 1970 was our very first Earth Day. And as you can imagine, in 1970, we really built things for automobiles. And it's not to say that this road will not be upgraded and work very well for automobiles, but we also think about lots of different accessibility options in 2020, and we'd like our roads, especially our main arteries, to reflect a changing world we live in, and this roadway will be more accessible. It'll be better for walkers, it'll be better for strollers, it'll be better for wheelchairs, it'll be better for bicycles, it'll be better for all different kinds of transportation. And I would like to say to the public that is not sure whether we need all of these different options in 2020, I believe we do. I believe that we should design our streets to be complete streets, and a complete streets policy is something that City Council is working on with the city administration. But I believe that the city administration already takes much of the complete streets rationale and thinking into their projects when they design them. But, you know, it's, this is a chance not only to make this street a better street for all users and for, you know, 8 to 80, for children as well as elderly, but it's also a chance to upgrade our utilities, to upgrade our infrastructure, and this project will do that. The city administration is proposing that we upgrade our water system, storm system, sanitary sewer. Not only is it old, but it's also undersized, and this also gives us the opportunity to take the overhead utilities and to put them underground. Many people see the burying of utilities as an aesthetic improvement, and I would argue it absolutely is, but it also does a number of things for safety. It does allow for the fire department to access certain properties much more easily than having to navigate utilities that are above ground. And of course, anytime we have severe storms, derechoes, high wind events, the above-ground utilities are at, are more susceptible to damage than underground. So this project not only totally replaces the pavement, has new sidewalks on the north side of Stimson Avenue, it has a shared-use path on the south side of Stimson Avenue, heading down to the Hawk Hocking Adina Bike Way. It will have new water and sanitary and storm lines, it will have decorative streetlights, it will even incorporate rain gardens like we see on Union Street, as well as tree and flower plantings. The natural gas line will be relocated by Columbia Gas to accommodate this new infrastructure. The city administration has decided to, as I mentioned, direct the overhead utilities to be placed underground. It's a very narrow right-of-way Stimson Avenue, and this provides a little bit more space by doing this. I think that these are all very positive parts of this project, but also, in talking with Director Hedy, also makes it very complex and very complicated. He believes this is one of the most complicated projects, given the size of the space that they have, that he has worked on for the City of Athens. Now, working on, with the utilities in order to plan for the, putting their services underground, has, you know, made this a little bit more complicated from a cost perspective. Normally, the cost of relocating these utilities is not one that we ask individual customers to bear, and the city administration is still working on all of the costs. I don't have all of the specific funds from which we are, the city administration is asking for money today. We will be talking about this, obviously, in coming weeks. But I can say, part of the complication is that not all of the underground work for the utilities is inside the right-of-way, and it can't be built that way, but the city administration is, you know, dedicated to working with property owners as well as their contractors to accommodate this conversion and where these utilities need to go. Director Hedy did point out that the Ohio Revised Code gives the municipality the authority to direct that electric utilities be placed underground, but of course, the municipality must pay for additional costs to do that. The law gives the municipality the option to pay these costs over a 10-year period, and the city administration has taken the position that AEP must take this step to accommodate our new infrastructure on Stimson Avenue, and that we are all best served by putting these utilities underground. In terms of the telecommunications companies, they will also be directed to begin projects that place their lines into a duct bank, and those different telecommunications companies will have the option of paying for part of that duct bank and then relocating their lines in it, or possibly moving out of their right-of-way into their own easements. The city will have to construct this duct bank as part of the project and then be repaid by the utilities. So as noted, this is a very complex project, especially when we get into the utilities. And as I noted in the third reading of the ordinance of the LPA agreement earlier, we have this small cities grant money coming to us from ODOT for part of this project, over $2 million. And because of the timeline for that grant, we really need to move forward without knowing exactly how we're going to share all these costs. So tonight, I'm letting the committee know that the city administration is asking council to consider authorizing the total expenditures to allow this project to be bid to determine the costs. The appropriations would come later, when they have a better idea of the cost sharing. Director Hedy did point out that this project will be completed or built over three years, and this will allow local revenue to be collected over those three years. The current estimates that he has are follows. The total construction costs, $5,200,000, that is the street and the city utilities, plus $1.5 million for the electric utility to be buried, and approximately $350,000 for the telecommunications duct bank. That equals a total of just over $7 million. The total authorization that we have, including the expenditures that we have authorized to date, is $630,000 for the design and the right-of-way acquisition. As mentioned, we have a number of grant sources that are helping us pay for this improvement to Stimson Avenue. $2,126,815 from the ODOT Small Cities Grant, which has already been awarded to the City of Athens, another $400,000 from an additional governmental entity, which means we have just over $2.5 million awarded for this project. We have a pending request for some ODOT safety funds in the, in the amount of $500,000, and then another pending grant of $250,000. So there is a pending, approximately three-quarters of a million dollars, that will be added to this. If we are successful on all these grants, they will equal just over $3 million, $3,276,815. And of that $7 million I mentioned previously, that leaves us $3.7 million to be funded. Now, we expect the utilities to share up to approximately $1 million in this project, and this assumes that AEP pays half of their costs, and the telecommunications pay about a sixth for each conduit, or it comes out to about, I believe, $58,000 for each conduit. And so that would bring our remaining balance down to $2,723,185. Now, there are a number of ways, and the next item on our agenda tonight is a loan for this project, and I, and I'll be talking about that separately. Property tax assessments is one way that the city has used to get money specifically for sidewalk repairs in front of a property owner's, in front of a property owner's property. We've done this, such as fixing the roadway at University Estates. But in all these cases, the city has to front the money and then pay itself back from these assessments over a 10-year period, and we will be talking about this in a number of pieces of legislation over the coming weeks and months. The, the city administration believes that it's most appropriate for property owners to be helping to pay for the burying of the utilities, as this has the largest impact on enhancing the property value of that, of that property, but this is a discussion that we will have over the coming months. Just to sort of finish my comments before we open this up for discussion, city administration believes that this is a project, you know, we really only have the opportunity to do every half-century, every 50 years or so, and that quite perhaps in our lifetimes, this may be the last chance we get to see something like this at this level to be done, and the city administration, particularly Engineer Hedy, would like to do it right. I think we have the right people in place to make sure this is done right, and I am, I am... right, and I am, I am behind, behind this transformation of Stimson Avenue. Open to questions from the committee?
You did a good job, Vice Chair Crowell.
Well, Professor Hedy, Professor Hedy. Director Hedy was very kind with his time with me today.
Providing background. That's great. And we have talked about this numerous times. What I'm going to suggest is we've got council members here in the chambers present, and we can, the ones of you who are with us remotely, Scott has your images up on the screen, so Vice Chair Crowell can call on you after we call on the people at the, at the dais. So just when, after the first comments are made, I think we've got the sound adjusted better now, hopefully, so you can hear their comments, and then flag in.
Yes, Member Claude Felder.
I am delighted to hear that the city is being so creative and persistent about pursuing external sources of funding, and it was just really nice to hear you go through that list and hear the total we would be responsible for keep shrinking and shrinking and shrinking. And if this will in fact be a three-year construction project, I would be hopeful that there could, you know, there just might be some additional sources of external funding that we could apply for in the future as well, but it's great to know that there's so many sources of funding available right now.
I agree. Mayor, were you raising your hand? No? Okay.
He's still struggling to hear.
He can't hear. Okay. Yes?
And if I may, I would just like to applaud the way that you talked about making the streets accessible for all kinds of people, and I think that's what we should keep doing every time we change a street, and it will really help the people who are using wheelchairs and pushing their babies and strollers and, and all of the pedestrians and people who want to use their bikes too. So I think that's just really great.
Okay. And before we go on, what I'm going to do is a 30-second elevator talk about what Councilmember Claude Felder said, so you all can hear. She basically said, "Thank you. Great to see the many different sources of funding. Also, great to see a complete streets program."
Good summary.
And, and any comments from remote participants?
I have one.
Okay.
The governor announced at his news conference today that the state's going to be cutting back at least 20% in all their departments. Because, well, we'll probably go into an economic recession. The funds that have been proposed, are they firm? Can they be withdrawn at, at some point? How secure are they? I suppose is my question.
I would have to check with Director Hedy. It's an excellent question, Member Reisner. I would believe that the large portion is set in stone, if that is the correct, the $2 million Small Cities Grant. I would be very surprised if, if that could be rescinded or pulled back. I don't know if the mayor can hear me now, if he has any comments on that, or perhaps President Isley can repeat that where he can hear.
Yes. The question from Councilmember Reisner, and, and we were asking perhaps for some guidance from the mayor, as to whether you've heard anything since they, the governor has announced 20% cutbacks, and whether or not the funding that we do have, particularly the two-point, over $2 million for the Small Cities Grants, we're hoping that's firm and awarded and not going to be reduced.
As I understand it, everything that has been awarded is awarded. So that money's been set aside. A lot of that is through the gasoline tax. The, the other two that are pending, the ODOT safety funds and the Councilmember Crowell, the TID is the Transportation Improvement District.
Oh, yes, right. Thank you.
As I, as I understand it, those monies have already been allocated to those fund lines. I think that the safety grant is pending, the Transportation Improvement District grant, we have yet to meet for our district, and our district is the county, Athens County, who will still apply for that as well as we move forward, but that is the lesser of all the grants that you see before you.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. I see no further comments. I will just say that one, one piece that I wanted to add, that I neglected to add earlier, is that when we've seen other projects go forward in the city, and we, we've seen some feedback that, for example, we didn't need bicycle lanes on East State Street, that we may not need bicycle lanes on East State Street in 2020, but I am looking forward to the next 50 years and the, the number of us who are utilizing other forms of transportation. I've been discussing in my other job with a number of people about the coronavirus and the things that it's sort of waking us up to, and the, the climate crisis we are in and the, the climate emergency that we recently discussed in a, in a resolution. There's something else also we really need to be preparing for, and I think the city is doing a very good job of, of preparing our infrastructure, not just for tomorrow, but for the next 10, 20, and 50 years, and I think Stimson Avenue project does that. Okay, well then, we'll move on?
Councilmember.
Oh, yes, sorry.
I want to piggyback on to the, the climate emergency that the city passed is exactly what this sort of infrastructure development helps to support the climate emergency. We talk about sustainability and, and between being a resilient community, and this is the sort of thing that resilience is essential, that we're experiencing right now, today. And I, I want to say yay for everybody in the city who's just been going out 110%. But resilience is essential, and making sure we have complete streets, which is, you know, pretty much policy of the city of Athens, helps to ensure that 10 years from now, we are also resilient in those sort of unforeseen circumstances. Thank you. And, and just for the people participating remotely, because I heard, I saw the mayor with the, with the ear up, Vice Chair Crowell making the comment about the importance of planning for the future, and that this, this kind of project with the care with which, looking at all aspects of it, does plan for that, and also environmentally sound concepts. And then Councilmember Fall added, yes, and applauds this, particularly in light of the climate crisis resolution we had passed last month, that we need to be paying attention to that kind of thing. So, and thank you for the nod of assent. Okay.
Okay. Thank you very much. Well, we will move on to the second item under the Transportation Committee tonight, if there are no further comments. Okay, and that is the, listed as the Stimson Avenue loan for this project. And under this item, as I, as I mentioned, that the, the project will be built over three years, allowing local revenue to collect from, from each of those years. But the city administration anticipates borrowing money to, to really deliver this project, as I outlined, and then servicing the debt with the future revenue from income tax and utility revenues, coupled with property tax assessments and the contributions from the telecommunications companies for their share of the duct banked, bank construction. So that is, this project will necessitate, you know, borrowing some money for the project.
Which is really cheap right now.
Yeah, right. We just refinanced our house, what you recommended.
Yeah, it's super cheap.
And so, Councilmember Crowell, for those of you viewing remotely, he was just summarizing on the loan, that we had detailed earlier that we have approximately $2.7 million that we're going to be looking for funding, some of which will be reimbursed from revenues and payments from the other utility companies, but at some point during the course of the project, we will probably come down to a defined amount that the city may well need to borrow for this. And I, I think I can reassure that Auditor Heck is always very careful in walking us through this to make sure we're within the limits, because we do have limits set on how much we can borrow, based on the, the assets which the city owns. And she's always very careful to keep us within the guidelines on that, so I look forward to her guidance.
Any comments from the Transportation Committee? Additional members of council?
Any other questions from the remote audience, or any comments? Okay, all right.
Thank you. I will return the Transportation Committee to its esteemed chair, Mr. Kotzis, for road salt.
Okay.
Good news about road salt.
Road salt discussion.
Take us the other direction.
So you're aware.
Yeah, thank you so much. Boy, it's, it's hard to, to come on stage after that opening act. So yes, road salt. For the 2020 contract, I do have the, the ability to deliver a silver lining to the winner that never was. We didn't use that much road salt this year. We, on average, use approximately 1,200 tons of road salt per year for our winters. Currently, right now, we have, we have 1,500 tons. We want to keep an additional, you know, amount over what the average is, because you don't want to buy it in the winter time when, when the prices are up. There is also currently 200 tons that is still left on, on, on last year's contract to, to purchase. So the Director Hedy is, is requesting a purchase of only 400 tons for, for 2020, which would come to, based on a, a high price per, based on a high price per ton of 120 per ton, the budget is requesting 48,000 for road salt for the remainder of 2020. Usually, we budget about $90,000, so this is 53% of what our, of what our, of what our budget usually is for this, for this line. So do we have any, any specific questions about road salt?
Do we have room for all of that? If we usually use 1,200 tons and now, I guess I don't understand what the exact total is. Is it going to be 1,500 tons or 1,600?
There'll be about 2,100 tons.
Do we have room for that?
I would assume that they would be, they would be, they wouldn't be purchasing if they didn't have room for storage.
Right. And so, Councilmember Kotzis was summarizing how much we're going to be needing to purchase, how much we didn't use this year, which is a savings for us. And then Councilmember Claude Felder's question in return was, do we have room for storage? And as I understand, I think maybe, I don't know if it was up to 10 years ago, we, I know that we did improvements over to the road salt, where the road salt is stored, over on West State Street. So this is a covered area, and it also has a concrete base. So we don't have potential for runoff, and it is protected.
That's accurate.
Okay.
I have a question.
Councilmember Reisner? Yes.
Yeah, that's neat.
I qualify voice recognition at this point. It's hard to watch all of the on-screen.
Sure. How much salt do we use this year? It's a pretty light winter, wasn't it?
Oh, you need to summarize for me, so he can't hear you.
Yes, yeah. Now, I, I don't know what we, if we, this would just be an assumption if we started with 2,100 tons.
We're, we're doing the math over here, Councilmember Reisner.
It would be 600, 600, 600 tons.
Did we use 600?
That would be, that would be my assumption.
We used approximately 600 tons this year, to answer your question.
Is that a lot?
No.
No, much, much less than usual.
That's, that's half, half the average.
Half of what we normally do.
We don't have to buy as much, correct?
Correct. Oh, give him the 90,000. Usually, we spend 90,000. The request is for 48,000 this year.
Yeah, usually we spend about 90,000 for the salt, and we're only requesting 48,000.
Oh, okay, great. Yeah. Okay, that's the part I couldn't hear.
Okay.
Okay. And if that is, if we're done with questions, that, that is it for Transportation Committee.
Okay. So I think we stand closed for our committee meetings tonight. We are, next Monday is the 5th Monday. We will not be meeting.
Oh, darn.
And so we'll be back on April 6th, and urging everyone to stay safe, stay at home unless you need to go out, and take some time to complete the census. And good night. Thank you.